Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the board meeting this morning on May the 5th. I'd like to call the meeting order and ask Mr. Slade if he would say a word of prayer.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the day you've given us today. Thank you, Lord, that you have equipped these men with wisdom and discernment, that you've given them the abilities and the skills to serve their fellow man, to serve our community, to sacrifice their time, their effort, their energy, Lord, to sacrifice at times, Lord, what they do for a living so that they can serve their, their community and their fellow man. I thank you for that. Thank you, Lord, that you've given them what they need today and they're doing wise decisions. I thank you, Lord, that you give us law enforcement, Lord, you give us emergency responders, you give us people who run toward danger, not away from danger, Lord, so that we might be protected and live in a safe place. I thank you for that. Father, help us never to take for granted all the many ways that you bless us abundantly and give us resources so that we can accomplish great things. Thank you, Lord, that we can come back to you and give you thanks for those things and help us to never take it for granted, Lord, that we get to participate in our government. Christ name, amen.
I want to do a little something different this morning before we go into the public comments. I want to make a motion to add an agenda to the board meetings consideration action. This item is to be added for action to reinstate the zoning amendments that were adopted by the board supervisors.
Hey, listen, y'all got to keep it down or you're going to be asked to leave.
Yeah. On April 7th, 2025, and to reinstate the zoning ordinance as it existed on April 6th, 2025. I'll make that motion.
Second. Jay, pardon me.
I made the motion. Steve, second the motion. Any further discussion?
Jay, I mean, in short, we are rescinding the newest, uh, codes and thing, the ordinances.
Correct.
And going back to the one that we had the day before.
Yes, sir.
Right.
As an add item, yes, sir.
We're going, we're rescinding everything that was changed and we're going back to April 6th, just like it was before we made any changes or amendments to this order. All in favor?
Aye.
Now I need to make a motion to approve. I move that the board supervisors adopt a board order that rescinds the zoning amendments adopted by the board supervisors on April 7th, 2025, and reinstate the zoning ordinance as it existed on April 6th, 2025. I made that motion, I get a second?
Second.
Brad, I made a motion, Brad Calhoun second motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Look, I appreciate all y'all coming out today and showing your concern and, uh, what we just did, I think, make sure everybody understands that everything went back previous the way it was with no changes.
Amen, thank you.
Right. I understand there's been a lot of talk and issue and a lot of stuff is written where it's hard to understand. Some, some things were, I'm not going to say was imperfect or not perfect, but, you know, the way they were written, it was hard to explain, understand, and some things were, you know, were, wasn't what we agreed with and was kind of wrong. You know, it's our fault for not going over it and, and looking at it to, to detail. But, uh, with that being s- Yeah. With that being said, uh, I'll open it up for public comments. Uh, Jennifer Hall.
Jennifer Hall, Executive Director of the Mississippi Manufactured Housing Association. I would like to thank you for taking this vote to rescind. As you said, there have been so many people concerned about this and that they didn't know about it. And I hope, I hope next time that when y'all do any kind of land use that you will consider putting it on social media. I know the law may require just two times in the paper, but people need to know what's going on with their land. And you as supervisors have that right to, to go to that extent to let people know about it. And, you know, with the meeting the other night with other, over 400 people across the county, um, they were very concerned and as you said, it was very confusing. And, uh, we always want Rankin County to be a place where people are welcomed and they feel welcomed. And I do think manufactured housing and modular housing meets a lot of people's needs to have that. I hope you will look at the new definition that we just did at this legislature, changing the definition of modular. So it encompasses all structures, uh, used as a dwelling. I hope you will look at that. Um, but I just, I'm very pleased, this has restored my faith in the power of the people. People still care about what happens to their land. They very much, it's, it's, it's very, um, emotional for a lot of people. And I've got to hear a lot of those stories in my office of elderly people owning that land for generations and generations. And agriculture is agricultural. People move to the country for a reason. They like living in the country. And I can, I'm very appreciative and I thank God for touching your hearts and your minds and making this vote. Thank you very much.
And just to address, uh, we, we are working, you know, as we speak, we are working on updating the website so we can be more transparent and get some feedback at, you know, to the public when we do stuff.
Thank you.
But, but we're working on that right now on a page. That way we can communicate and, and let everybody know what's, what's going on and hopefully that will be up and, and going pretty soon.
Thank you.
Next, I have, uh, Minnie Van.
It sounds like a cough. Thanks, my, I just put that on there.
Just go down to the next one. Uh, what about Laura Faulner?
Laura Faulner.
I'm right here. Hi, I'm Laura Faulner. I'm a citizen of Rankin County. Um, I noticed that Mr. Brad Calhoun and Mr. Sid Scarborough gave a public apology that were one word difference. One called it a mistake and one called it an error. Um, a lot of people have been pointing out that y'all have a lawyer that reviews everything that y'all go through. So why was there not more attention put on something that would affect not only the elderly and the current people of our community, but future generations? I don't know if you noticed, but there's not many people my age in this room. And that's because we have lost faith in the system. We don't pay attention to it. We don't read the newspaper. We don't go to the board of supervisors' website. So just like Ms. Hill said, we have got to find a better way to notify the people because these same people matter. They pay taxes, they build our community. Like what y'all put into place, I grew up in foster care. So this, and I work in construction and my goal is to build many homes for our juvenile teens in Rankin County. And this bill directly impacted that and our elderly people, people that have been here for generations. And it wasn't taken more seriously.
Well, that's why we're here and addressed it today. And for the record, the lawyer didn't write my speech, you know, that I, that I put out there.
Well, did y'all share speeches?
We talked about it. We, we certainly did, we thought that was the right thing to do.
It was, and we appreciated it.
Here's mine on my little piece of paper that I made a note, so no lawyer, you know, just to, to clear that fact up.
Yes, sir.
And you can probably see the spelling and, and tell no lawyer.
Yes, sir. Well, what about the apologies from the other people that voted for this?
Okay. Gentlemen, we, th- this is public comment, so, um, we need to address comments to the board. It's not public questions. Um, so, and you guys have taken action and you've rescinded the action that you took on the 7th. Put, and you've reset things to the way they were on April the 6th. I think you've acknowledged that we, uh, need to revisit all of that, so.
You have, but I'm just asking for a simple, I'm sorry to the people.
For me, I do apologize that everybody here and all the people that aren't here had emotions and are interested in our county government. Uh, I'm sorry that this got out there and was a lot of miss spoken things, a lot of things to get people mad. And I, I'm not one to do social media much. I, I just tell you, I, I don't. Uh, I knew we were going to be here in this meeting and that I would have an opportunity to say what I'm saying now.
Yes, sir.
And thank y'all for having trust enough to come up here and believe that maybe things would change.
Well, the fact that y'all did say you're sorry, just like Ms. Hill said, definitely brought faith back in y'all. So, thank y'all.
I'd like to say something too. I mean, we got elected by the people. We did. Not our families, but when our families have threats against them, that's going too far. And there's a lot of threats on Facebook. That's not right.
Yes, sir. I agree.
So a lot of those folks on social media should be apologizing for making comments against fam-
I completely agree with that because this should not be, it shouldn't be about trying to hurt somebody. We just want to be understood. That's, that's the simple fact.
I mean, there's a way to do that without threatening people's families.
I can't speak for other people, but I would never threaten any of anybody's family regardless of our views. Even if the bill wasn't rescinded, I'm still not that type of person.
And that's why we're, you know, getting a webpage, you know, to be a little more transparent and stuff, you know. But like I say, everybody that called me or left me a phone number, you know, call, I called them back or tried to call them back.
Yes, sir.
You know. Now, I couldn't get to every single person because there were so many, but 98% of the people that left the number, you know, I tried to reach out to them and, and like I say, hey, we've rescinded it and moved everything, you know, back and we sorry for the inconvenience and, uh, hey, nobody's perfect.
We want y'all to help us when, or when we have something like that. We, hopefully we can put it out there, be more transparent. But we need some of your in, uh, inputs.
Yes, sir.
That's really what we should have under our public comments or times that we set it up for people to come in. There wasn't anybody to come in and talk.
Right. And a lot of your generations that use social media, they're not paying attention to what y'all do unless they work in insurance and construction, which I do both of.
We're going to try to do a better job, uh, and even manufactured housing. I, I know Jennifer, I know her well, and I see her once or twice a, a month. And the never conversation came up. Uh, and I, I guess I should have went to her, eh, instead of expecting that she would come to me. So I apologize for that.
Thank you.
And I apologize as well.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, that's all I needed.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Is that me?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Minnie Van and I came here once before, 2019. My husband and I purchased some property in, uh, Rankin County. And we was told then, we bought two acres of land and the gentleman that sold us the land, I don't know if he knew because I was told that we was landlocked. That I had, we, if we agreed to build an 1,800 square home, they would give us a 911 address. And that's what they did. But the thing is, the land was not landlocked. So it was kind of finagged so we could do what was asked of, of us to do. It was only my husband and I, we did not want an 1,800 square foot. We wanted to build a modular home. Since we bought the property, my husband has passed away. I'm still building this 1,800 square foot home for one person. I don't know what I'm going to do with all this space. Also, we cannot, now I know you are rescinded, that we have to get five acres to put a property on, um, to build on the home. Also, with the, uh, I'm losing my thought.
Uh, Steve, I just want, where do you live at? What's your address?
Right now, I'm still living in Louisiana. My home is being, being built here. I'm moving back home.
But where is the house being built?
Is this your court?
This is, well, who is over, who is over this?
What's the road? What's the road that?
It's Mount, they changed it from Mount Helm Road to Mount Helm Trail.
It's right next to Highway 25. It's, uh, it's, it's a private drive, Steve. Uh, Mount Helm Trail that connects to, uh, Mount Helm Road, which is a public road. And Mount, Mount Helm Trail is a private drive that serves multiple parcels of property. Uh, and so it's an, it's an access issue. It's a public safety issue, um, where we struggle with development activity that is on a private drive that doesn't meet our standards for public roads. And so if you've got an 80,000 pound fire truck trying to get to a house fire, you're going to have a Dickens of a time where you're trying to navigate that on the, a glorified driveway. If that makes sense.
If I remember right, this was some heir property and there were several other family members around.
That's correct.
Like it was being subdivided.
Yes. So what happened, Steve, is the, the court, in the context of an estate proceeding, uh, you had, you had a patriarch of the family who passed away, uh, le- left several children, maybe as many as a half a dozen children. And each of those children is entitled to a portion of the larger estate property. So the court is left with no other option than to break that property up into multiple parcels and to distribute those or have the executor of the estate or the administrator of the estate distribute those parcels to the heirs. And so what happens is that will leave multiple subdivided parcels by way of court order that don't have access. The court typically does not address how it is that a given parcel actually gets back to the public road for means of access. Just leaves that open because that question is not before the court. So it's a real issue for us. Sometimes we get things visited on us that come from a court order that the people haven't had anything to do with, don't understand the process. We didn't have anything to do with, didn't get a vote on it. We're just left with the aftermath of it and we have to try to address how are we going to get access to this property? And Ms. Van's situation is a classic exhibit A of what happens when there's a court order that divides property with no access. So we had to address the access issues and I don't, to be quite honest with you, I don't know if we ever have actually solved the problem because there's so many parcels out there that are all trying to get to the same place without real access to do so.
Alright.
And also, I want to ask if there, with the street department, if someone can come up there? Because the home that I am built, getting built, the gentleman told me they can go back when they finish building my home and they can level this, they row it out. But I don't know.
So, Ms. Van.
How they told you a story, we, we can't work on private property.
No, not you. The contract.
Oh, okay.
The contract. He told me that he could go back when they finish building the home. They can go back and they can take whatever the name of the machine. And scrape, yeah, and, and scrape the road off.
Yes, ma'am.
But somebody's, somebody's going to have to maintain that over the years. I don't know if y'all have some kind of covenants in y'all's, on your private drive, but it just shouldn't be you having to maintain it. It'd be other people that live on, on that property also.
Okay, I know there's another gentleman here, I think he told me it's approximately two acres. But the only thing is, that leads up to my property. They, he could sell me that property, I would, I can make a private driveway. But the only thing is, is just getting across Mount Helm Road. So I was told, but because you would have to put the, build the road from one side to the other side, that that would be a problem. But right now you're in the same area where the land is. You ought to do some construction right there.
Harvard?
Yes.
It may be MDOT, it may be the Mississippi Department of Transportation. So that's, it's immediately adjacent to Highway 25.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So that, that is very close to where MDOT, the Department of Transportation in Jackson. That's where they have their legal authority, jurisdiction, the right of way to Highway 25. So, um, that's, that's another challenge that Mount Helm Trail brings. It's that where it will connect to Mount Helm is actually in what's called a flare. Help me out, Tim Parker. It's the, uh, it's the right of way flare from Highway 25 and MDOT controls that, not Rankin County. So some of your questions may have to be answered by folks who aren't here in this room. They're sitting in Jackson.
But to help, if you give that gentleman sitting over there a plaid shirt your phone number, we'll be glad to meet with you and go over, answer all your questions you have.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, Ms. Van.
Alright, uh, Mr. Benson.
Excuse me, be alright if I put my hat on, y'all, because I'm, got a lot of gear here. Good morning.
Good morning.
Listen, so since I've been sitting there, I, I understand now that I'm not to ask questions on the board. So I'm going to try to summarize what these questions were trying to ask you. And, and so just bear with me on this here because I, I, I want to, I, I appreciate the fact that you have taken the action necessary to rescind and at least for the moment, uh, satisfy these residents of Rankin County. It's important because you guys were elected and, you know, we, the average of us, go to work every day or we got normal lives. We don't have time to be trying to figure out all this, uh, fine line stuff that's happening. We trust that you guys were elected to be able to handle those kind of things. So here, here's, here's my question, one of the question, one of, I'm going to rephrase it. Here's my summary of that question. Obviously, there had to be some kind of, uh, intent for making these rules. Uh, because obviously it does not benefit the people or the residents of Rankin County. So who, so without asking you who it does, uh, benefit, I'm just going to say, we need to look into, uh, who actually benefits from these changes because it's important that it don't happen again. And I just want to make sure that we covered it. Uh, as far, I heard someone, well, you told me not to ask no questions, so I'm just trying to sum it up.
Yep. Central Mississippi Planning Development District
Mm-hmm.
Does a lot of statistical data, they do a lot of studies, they provide guidance to counties and municipalities. And it's, I mean, it's the, and they, we're required to review our ordinances, what, every 10 years?
Every five.
Five years?
Yes, sir.
And when we looked around, I think the cities are all, I'd say cities, Brandon, Pearl, Pearl's moved into seven years. Uh, Flowood, Richland, they were stricter on mobile homes and, and stuff. I think Hines County adopted one that's similar to what we were looking at. And there were some things in there that fine tuning, they got by us. Um, but that's what this is for, so we can address. But anyhow, we didn't just come in here willy-dilly say, do this. It's been brought to us by people that do these studies and what's best for the community and that kind of thing.
Well, I appreciate that because what's best for the community, in this case, we don't feel like actually having. So, so here's, here's the deal. Again, I, I believe that, that there are benefits for making those moves and obviously the benefits are not for the residents of Rankin County. So they offer somebody. I'd like to know who without asking that question. Uh, the other thing is, I heard you say something about you're in the process of developing a website. I think that that is a positive move because if, if everybody feels like I feel here in this room, I want to know what's going on now. I'm just going to tell you that you woke up the dead. Uh, I want to know, I want to know the minutes from every meeting because I want to know what those proposals are, who's actually proposing and who's actually voting for them. Because it's important now that we know that there's some, as you put it, willy-milly stuff or whatever, that's going to happen from time to time. And we don't need to get caught off guard to where we have to be concerned about whether or not, uh, my two acres or my five acres is going to be landlocked. Because basically that's what happened with this rule. Uh, whether I got fi- uh, four acres and a half or two acres and a half, you basically landlocked it and basically told me that I can, it's no va- of no value anymore. Uh, because you can't do anything else with it. So we just want to be clear. And I'm not just talking about the mobile home, uh, issue. I'm talking about people that don't have mobile homes. There, there are, there are rules that were put in place for them. So this is why I know that was a hidden agenda. And the reason I say hidden because we don't know what it is, we don't know what the agenda was or the intent of, of the rules, so therefore it was hidden. Uh, this last thing, I'm going to say this. I'm going to say this about, uh, Rankin County. If you notice, the people that are gathered in here, we are all Rankin County's. That's the common denominator here. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't matter if we, we represent one particular party or the other party or one race or the other race, but listen. Uh, my grandfather purchased land here over 100 years ago. I would like to be able to leave to my children and my grandchildren the same property that my grandfather left me. And I do not want restrictions to where I, when you're dead, you're dead. But I don't want to be, I don't want to have to think about leaving. And they have to go through this process that we're going through today. We got to have people in place that are concerned about the people that put them in this place. So, so with that being said, I thank you for your time, uh, and we look to see you on voting day.
Ms. Kay Mitchell?
Well, the question's been answered, but, and I'm glad you apologized because I was a very mad lady at you.
Oh, I know you are.
It's still in to a certain point and I have to ask God to help me.
Right. Well, I, I understand and, you know, maybe we can sit down and discuss it and, so you're not quite so mad at me.
You need to wait till I'm not mad.
Well, well, call, uh, uh, call me when you get cooled off and then I'll come by and visit you.
You can ask Mr. Mark.
Yeah.
I worked for him for years and I worked for Rankin County for years.
Right.
And I know him, Mr. Ryan Baker, he took me on tour to jail and asked me if I wanted to spend the night. No, granted. But the one thing that I was upset with you about was mobile homes.
Right. Well, we, we addressed that and like saying, hey, that's all I can do is apologize and, and move forward and learn from my mistakes.
That's right, yeah, when you meet them face to face, you apologize to them.
Right.
You should.
Right.
You should.
Thank you.
Because of the fact of a lot of elderly people.
Right.
And, one more question. Um, um, I can't ask the question, I can't say. The garbage bills for the elderly went from $25 to $60. Where they could take that extra money and buy medicine, groceries, you know, pay a light bill, a water bill, but no, we had to add that much money to the elderly. You know, on a fixed income, on social security.
Right.
And that needs to be addressed.
Okay.
And thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank each one of you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, I guess, do I need to keep going down the list? Is everybody?
I, I have a statement. I'm on there. Oh, the next time-
Come up here and.
It's not a question, turn it into a statement.
Hi, my name's Karen Martin. The next time y'all decide to vote on something like this that is going to affect this many people, my advice would be having it in City Hall. And in the evening, when these working people should be at work, they're here defending their land. And piggyback off this lady here about the trash people, not only do they not do, do, do a good job, they tear up our garbage cans. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, what, if you step up?
I just want to say, step up, you can get me there. No. Okay.
Thanks for the opportunity, only in America. Can we do this? The system worked.
Say your name, please.
Earl Coleman. Uh, the system works. I just want y'all to, you know, it's pretty obvious to an outsider or the impression is that, that this was a special interest deal. When you have this type of stuff, y'all have town hall meetings around.
When you have this type of stuff, y'all have town hall meetings around, and let, and get an input instead of have it, and I know it's not closed doors, anybody can come in here, but it's, uh, it was kind, in my opinion, it was kind of clandestine, y'all got called out. You did the right thing, the system worked, but this needs to be a lesson to all of you, that the people, you represent the people, not special interest groups. Thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you. Right.
My name is Holly May. I have a place at Pisgah. I have a place at Pearl. This has been the hardest two weeks of my entire life, knowing, not knowing if I'm gonna have a home when I wake up, or if I'm gonna be homeless, if I'm gonna have to leave my son at Pisgah, my home at Pisgah, that I paid for sixteen years, because it's a modular home. If I'm gonna lose my home in Pearl, because it's a mobile home. I am, okay, y'all apologized, but you knew what you were doing from the start. Each fi- each one of you knew the consequences. This right here is nothing but a show. I'm waiting to see what y'all are gonna throw at me next, because am, do I feel like y'all are concerned? No way. I believe you only did this because of social media. So what's next? When are we gonna be homeless? When are y'all gonna go back and do this to us again? This was done with us not knowing, it was not publicized, if it was publicized, it was in the newspaper, from what I'd heard. We all have mailboxes, my water bill gets to me, my land taxes get to me. If y'all would've sent me a letter stating about the meeting that made all the rules, I would've gotten that letter too. And no, I'm not thankful for none of your, um, I'm sorries, because they're not genuine. You're five grown men, you knew from the start, you're very well educated, you knew what you were doing. Y'all know you don't want mobile homes, because you can't get the tax value, you can't off a hundred thousand dollar home. The modular home at Pisgah, I paid a hundred and three thousand dollars for. The little two-bedroom house next to me, they bought for thirty thousand. What's it state? Not their little thirty thousand dollar house, mine, my modular home. My twenty-one years of there. Brought my son to Pearl to go to the school district here, because I agree it's the best one, bought a mobile home. I don't trust you, period.
Please let me out, please let me out, please let me out, please let me out, please let me out.
Good morning, teacher, everyone.
I, I came to this meeting because I'm concerned about my land, and I think everyone in here just about know me. I've been bouncing around here, some of them say twenty-eight year, but eighty-two year. And I wanna know why it's some landlocked here in Rankin County. And I've been traveling road for eighty years. And I would give a permit to haul dirt off my land, I got some of the best dirt in the state of Mississippi. I've had it tested in Mississippi State, place based in Jackson, up in North Mississippi. But y'all let a guy out of Louisiana come in and haul dirt, and hadn't had some of the dirt tested, and hauling it everywhere, but you shut me down. Uh, I'm landlocked, they say I tore the road up, I didn't tell the road up, Joe McGee and his truck tore the road up, on Rankin Road. I volunteered to go in and fix the road, talk to, uh, Mike Harris, and told me no. Now they gonna tore the road up on Bridge Road, where I go to my other farm. I can't even get down to do it in my car. So I wanna know what is this board supervisor gonna do about it? Because I've been shut down for three years, but they hauling dirt there, opened up a dirt pit right there by, in Interstate twenty. And I have a certified dirt pit, and it's still certified, but I can't haul dirt out of there, but everybody else hauling dirt. And they hauling dirt that not been tested and everything, and I got people calling me from everywhere, and say, "Mr. Kirsh, say your dirt is certified going to Interstate," and we have did background check, and it's certified everywhere. But I can't haul dirt, but they hauling dirt that, you know, they're putting foundation, then they have to go and move it out. So I wanna know what to answer.
I can answer a little bit of it, and I know you already aware. The property that you have to go across to get to the county road is another private citizen's land. We can't make that man let you, that's between you and him, not the government.
Well, do I have to go to court together, August?
I would think so, I don't know, I mean, that's, you don't want the government operating too much and start telling people, telling that, telling this other man that he can't, so
Well, now, y'all say I would tear the roads up. Say I would tear the road up, so this man tore the road up, so what's the deal on that? And Bridge Road is a, is a, is a public road. And, and I tried to go out yesterday with my car to go to my farm, I couldn't even get down. So what's the deal on that?
I have to, I'll have
And say, say I would bring a mug, say my truck would bring a mug up in the road, but I see their roof, uh, somebody opened up a pit right here next to the Interstate, and I went out there yesterday, it all kinda mugged in the road.
Well, we need to get our road manager on that, thank you.
Well, I have talked, I have talked to him, and I can't get no kind of answer. So I've been sitting for three years, waiting on somebody to answer my question, and I can't get no kind of answer.
I would think you probably need to just go get you an attorney and go to court and get you some kind of
Well, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that, but I wanna bring to y'all attention
Okay.
And see, could, what could y'all do about it?
Yeah.
Because see, this man, he live in Sweet Ford, Louisiana, and him and Willie out there, tearing up the road, digging dirt everywhere. And it, to me, it's not fair.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate y'all, y'all helped me.
Hello, everybody, again. I'm back again, I'm Ava Harvey, Pastor Ava Harvey, Dr. Ava Harvey. I ran against Steve, uh, the first time, and I'm running again, Steve, I told y'all already. So we're going back to April seventh, twenty twenty-five, or April sixth, whichever one. That's one hundred and seventy-four pages of gobbledygook. Unless you have Craig Slay, you don't even know what that stuff says. And I've still been trying to divide my grandfather's land, that he bought in nineteen fifty-something, with his heirs, and I don't know what to do, 'cause I'm not gonna put on that deed that my grandbaby can never put a mobile home on that property. And yes, I live in RE one, and I don't think that's fair. So I think, as Mr. Scarborough's saying, make it plain, that one hundred and seventy-four pages need to be sensible enough that people like me and poor people that don't have no money can understand. 'Cause if I've got to get six attorneys to dissect one hundred and seventy-four pages, I'm already broke. So that's my point, and I wanna thank you, I think today is a big win for Rankin County, and especially, poor people like me. And our citizens, thank you for the apology, we just hope it's sincere. But that's not gonna stop me from running against you again, Steve. I love you, brother.
Y'all won't have to worry about this like any of them.
Good morning, counsel. I'm Anthony Prestige. I own land on Lewis Prestige Road. My great-grandfather, Jim Prestige, and his wife Maddie, bought that land during the Depression, paid cash for it, winning it with nothing but woods. Him, his wife, a jolt wagon, as I was told, a span of oxygen and an axe, began the process of clearing that land. Today, up to the fifth generation lives on that land, still, is still in the family. I drove a hundred and fifty-five miles when I heard about this. I pastor a church in Columbus, Mississippi. I've been in the ministry well over thirty years, part-time and full-time. Born and raised there, I went to church in Pillahatchie. Attended school and graduated high school at Pisgah. So all this is very close to me. Thank you so much for the rescension of the rules and stuff that you passed. The idea of, and I think I can speak for a lot of country folks, 'cause I am one, is how can government entities, within proper scope, rules and regulations, be able to come in and tell us what we can and can't do on our own land? I understand health regulations, guidelines, got no problem with that. In about nine years, my wife and I will be retiring from full-time ministry, and we're gonna be moving back home. My wife is from Greenville. So she understands all the flat land, she still can't stand the hills sometimes, but she's coming home with me, if the Lord wills. We're gonna be investing roughly about a hundred thousand dollars, putting up a structure to live in, whether it's the trailer, modular home, build a home. We've already got plans, we wanna raise some horses, so that means we gotta put up a barn. We wanna maybe have a shop for me, because I do woodworking and stuff like that. If things would've remained as they were, that could not have happened. Or if it could've happened, there would've been so much red tape and hoops to jump through, it would've cost us double what it would have, or what it would maybe now. I'm asking the board to, in the future, and yes, thank you, you know, I was looked in on all the message boards and all that, because, like I said, I've got family that lives here, I've got a family member in the room with me today. And we came just to represent just eighty acres. There's a lot of people who live in our area, in the Sand Hill, Eastburg area, some of them families have been there even longer than we have. Lot of it's agriculture land, some of it's farmland, few little stores here and there, but it is still mostly rural and mostly family-owned properties. And so we're asking the board to strongly consider what your steps would be. Yes, we understand that by law, there are certain things that need to happen. There are certain rules and requirements that should happen, and that we don't have a problem with. But also, when you start messing with someone's livelihood, and when you start messing with someone's private land, as y'all saw today, that's where the rubber meets the road, and some people can get upset. You say, "Are you upset?" Hmm, little bit, maybe. I'm glad to see what happened, and as the first gentleman who spoke this morning said, "The system works." Only in America can we have the process of redressing our government, to do so in a peaceful and civil manner, and get our point across, and hopefully, those points are considered, and appropriate changes made within the law. As I said, I'm gonna be, be retiring from full-time ministry, if the Lord allows me, to hold my health in about nine years. I'll be moving back to the land that my great-grandparents cleared. They literally had to cut a road in from Old Forty-three to even get into the land. There was nothing there, just land, just trees. And my great-grandfather come in with his wife and his children, and they built the land that we own today. Now, I hope that when my time comes, if the Lord doesn't come back first, I hope that I'm able to pass my part of the inheritance on to other family members, either way. I pray that God would give you wisdom, grace, and anybody who is acting in a way that's unbecoming, if there's threats and stuff like that, that has no place in civil discourse. Anybody who's making threats should be prosecuted, that's how I feel about it. None of your families should be threatened or intimidated. If there's any gripes, any beefs, then we should approach our supervisors and/or their staff, however it works, in a respectful manner and tone, and be able to air our concerns without resorting to all kinds of nonsense. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Fair Straugler. I moved to this county forty-five years ago, and I still live on the same property on Rock Hill Road. Brad, you are my supervisor. Um, when we first, when my husband and I first moved out there, we cleared off just a little bit of land, and we put as a mobile home out there. And we worked very hard, and we took our land and cleaned it up a little bit at a time, as we could afford to do so. Um, unfortunately, he did pass away, I still live there, and it's a beautiful piece of property, and I, and I don't mind the trailers that are on that road out there. I felt like I went to sleep April sixth, twenty twenty-five, and then when I woke up and I heard all of this, I thought I was in Twilight Zone. I thought I was like in communist Rankin County, I couldn't believe this. I felt so sorry for the people. When I drive to church, to Puckett Church, and I look at all the manufactured homes, and all the trailers, and how nice they keep their place up, some may be nicer than others, there's a little community of, of, um, some people of color that have, that are, that all live up in there, that are, you know, take care of their place, maybe not to our standards, but they may not be able to do that. I don't see how, I always thought of you as a very highly moral man, I still like you a lot, and your family too. I don't see how any of you that signed that, that document, that hundred and seventy-four page document, how you could put your head on your pillow at night and sleep with a clean conscience. You gotta understand something, I, I didn't have the money to have what I have now, but I worked hard and got there. I want other people to be able, that was my dream, I want other people to be able to have that dream too. And I will say, no, that, some people just, they live in the country, if I wanted to live in the city, under those, um, home organization, association things, I would live there, but I don't, I love living in the country. I had my horses in my front yard, I had my horses in my backyard, I love having that, I, I raised peacocks for fifteen years. I love doing stuff like that, but I don't, I think the county was overreaching with what they put in those papers. I'm glad y'all rescinded it, I'm glad you all apologized, and I just hope that next time, that y'all will be more open and transparent, because I don't know how the cat got out of the bag so quick, but when it did, it just like, we had an earthquake here in Rankin County, because the ground was rumbling everywhere. And it's not gonna affect me, but it could affect what I wanna leave for my girls. So I just hope that y'all will be more transparent and open. I saw it in the Rankin County news, um, it was just two, two little things, right, two little, um, passages about it, about this only thing, back to back, it wasn't done one week and the other, and it didn't even put all the information y'all had in there. You had to go get that information. But I did see it in there, and I don't thi- I thought that was kinda nefarious, the way y'all handled that. I think y'all should've put it on the front page, and then let us have some town hall meetings and let the people know, put it out on Facebook, social media, and so, so other people will know. 'Cause I realize that there's people that don't get on Facebook, but there's also people that don't take the Rankin County news, we need to have a better way to get it out, so people will know what's going on, and y'all voted on that, and that was kinda sneaky. But thank you.
I mean, that's what we're working for, to make it more
Thank you for rescinding it, every one of you, I thank you for rescinding that, for, 'cause, like I said, Brad, when I drive to church in Puckett, look at all those trailers out there where those people live, and it would've affected them, and I'm like, that just broke my heart. They've been there as long as I've been living out there. And I just say, I just don't, I, I just, I, I want people to be able to do what I did and have the same dream, if you wanna work towards that, and come to Rankin County, I love Rankin County, that's why I'm still here.
Thank you.
So, thank y'all.
Excuse me, is the mayor, excuse me, please, is the mayor in, I, I can't recognize anybody in here.
There's not a mayor here, that I know of.
I said the mayor is not here.
There is no mayor. This is a county, not a municipality.
If you don't, if I don't, uh, uh, mind, may I need to speak on something, 'cause I can't, this is, this is, uh, ridiculous right here. Y'all got the smallest building, they're fields, in like a county, they have this meeting, and many people are coming, and, may, well, when I speak here, I
Wait, did you wait your turn, did this lady go first, is it already up here?
Wait, did you wait your turn? Did this lady go first? Is she already up here?
Right after her.
Some sixty.
While she's coming up, I just want all you to know that we do livestream all our meetings, and they are stored on YouTube, so you go back and watch them all from the history. Just in case y'all have time to kill the future.
Sir, everybody don't get on there like that. Nobody, everybody can't afford to do that and stuff.
Ma'am, if, can you just state your name and your address?
I'm Dorothy Osby. I live at eight twenty-five West Sunset Drive in Brandon. On my, I have an old mobile home. When I mean old, it's a nineteen eighty-five, but it's home to me, all I can afford. When I was put off, or said they wasn't gonna lease any more land on Tamburland Street, maybe about twelve years ago, I had to leave. I didn't have any money. I had to buy, I had to borrow from my family and everybody to buy that old trailer. And now y'all talking, I don't know what y'all trying to do, but I heard about the meeting, but this is, this is ridiculous, starting off this small place. I, I went down to another building, thinking they were gonna have it there. Y'all, y'all.
Are you in the city limits of Brandon?
Yes, I am.
Well, you, you're really at the wrong place. They'll have their board meeting tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a county.
Well, I, I, well, I don't know.
But I appreciate your comments.
I'm on the, I live over on the Ponderosa, they call Harvest Fish House. Is that the city of the county?
That's the city of Brandon.
I'm at the wrong meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
But we appreciate you coming by and visiting.
Well, I appreciate, but I don't apologize. I don't apologize, but y'all, this is ridiculous. This is too small of a building. And I, I'm, I'm struggling. I can't recognize anybody here. So what time is that meeting?
I'm, I'm saying I'd get there by six.
See, I don't drive at night. I can't see at night. And it's, it's.
It's, it's still daylight at six.
Trying to make it sweet.
But they, they do livestream theirs, but I don't know if you can call in or anything, so.
No, I, I don't have it, I don't have the equipment to do that. Everybody can't afford it.
Jared Crane's your alderman. Give Jared, give Jared a, no.
So I get in contact with him?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Y'all have a nice day and good luck.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
Are you, do you live in the city, or are you from the county?
I'm from the county. I barely live in the county, but I'm in the county. Sid, you're my supervisor. I live over in Triangle Acres. And my name is Cindy Klabundy, and I have a nineteen seventy-two mobile home, fifty years old. And if you drove by, you'd think it was a house. It was my parents'. And this upset me tremendously when I heard about this, and again, it came after the fact. And I'm like everyone else, it needs to be out there in town hall meetings.
Can I ask you just, excuse me, I mean, what do you think the nineteen, did you think we were gonna make you move out of your mobile home?
Well, I didn't know.
Well, I mean, that wasn't the case.
You know, that, that, and I have three more mobile homes in a two-acre square.
All of those are perfectly fine where they were sitting. But I mean, it doesn't matter now. I mean, we rescinded, but you were grandfathered in. It didn't have to be moved. You could have lived there the rest of your life. Your kids could have lived there the rest of their life?
But, but I'm not just talking for me. I'm talking for everybody that has an older mobile home. But like I said, if you drove by my house right now, it's underpenned with brick. And I've been a mobile home person all my life, mobile home dweller. When, you know, my grand, uncle was president of the Mobile Home Association, they sold them. I have lived in mobile homes all my life. I don't know anything different. And the fact that y'all had just said, oh, well, you know, we're just gonna do this, that was just not right. I mean, I know you rescinded it, but you really, really gotta put it into heart as you move forward with your stuff. Where you said, if something happens to your home, you can't move anything in older than a seventy-two, I mean, a seven-year model. I don't have a problem with that. I really don't. I can't imagine somebody moving a fifty-year-old model home down the road anyway. I figure it'd jar itself apart. I don't have a problem with that. I mean, that's reasonable. But older people like myself, I'm feeling fixed income. You know, thinking about losing my home because misunderstanding of thinking, you're gonna come in and tell me I gotta get rid of my home, it's just on a half-acre lot.
Well, and that, that was a, a lot of people was thinking that. Nobody ever intention, or the intentions, I meant, if you had a mobile home that's twenty years old or thirty years old, it could stay. Nobody was asked to move. You know, and people didn't understand that. I had people calling me saying that they was gonna have to move their mobile home, or move, or they couldn't sell their property. Well, you don't have to sell your, I mean, you can sell your property with a mobile home on it. It didn't affect that. You know, it, it could be, you could give it to your kids, you know, as long as it.
Sidney, can I speak? Because she's talking about Triangle Acres. I'm a Realtor.
Right.
I've got a client right now that's supposed to close Thursday, a property that's in Triangle Acres, two acres, thirty-year-old trailer. And we have just had obstacle after obstacle after obstacle, and that's what they're worried about. The person buying it, the single mom, and she wanted to move the family and put another tiny house or.
Well, that, absolutely. That didn't even affect Triangle Acres, because that was on RMX, if I'm correct.
That's correct.
So that didn't even take an effect in Triangle Acres anyway, in some of your mobile home places, so.
What is RMX? What does that mean?
Residential, residential, RMX property. So that's how Triangle Acres was zoned, so this didn't even affect that anyway, or in, in Robin Hood.
But to go a step further, I wanna just go out and leave here and say, I highly doubt we make any change in mobile homes for the rest of this term.
That's a good thing.
Hey, can we keep it in order? Let her finish up and you go up.
Okay, but I appreciate you rescinding it, because that was the right thing to do. Because, you know, I'm an educated woman, but I didn't understand the jargon that was in there. Because I, I was a teacher for twenty-two, twenty-three years, and I couldn't even understand the jargon in that hundred and seventy-four page thing. And if I, you know, if I couldn't understand it, nobody else could. Light people cannot understand what y'all have to put out there. You gotta be able to put it back where we can read it and go, oh, I get it. So as you do that, town meetings would be an awesome, awesome thing to do before you decide to put something in concrete.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Willie Norwood. I live in seventeen forty-three Leesburg Road in Pele Hachi. And I guess there are a lot of us coming from that neck of the woods to have a complaint, because I was actually shocked. And I heard the gentleman say before that his foreparents had lived on the property, so did mine. My foreparents bought the property in eighteen sixty-one, and it's been in the family ever since. And to hear about, we can't do what we desire to do with our property, it really shocked me to me. I have, I raise cows. I have children. I have grandchildren. And to think that I can't divide my land up unless it's five acres per section, is really heartening to me. I don't, I, I've been paying taxes on this land for, since forever. And since I've been paying taxes, it, I feel like I should be able to do what I wanna do with my land. It have a stamp on it saying, this property belongs to Willie Norwood. That's what the deeds say. It is not controlled by someone else. I heard someone say that this is not a communist country. I had the pledge to serve in the United States Army. I went to Vietnam. I fought a war in Vietnam, in a communist country, and I saw what it's like to live in a communist country, where you have dictators. I didn't expect to come into a place where, excuse me, where there are dictators. This is what the United States have fought against for years and years and years, against even going to other countries to fight against dictators. We are not a dictator country. We are loving people, a loving country. I love Rankin County. I have a problem in Rankin County sometimes, because people wanna ride bicycles, groups coming out through my neck of the woods, disturbing my Sunday mornings and stuff like that, that don't even live in the area. I have dogs. I have cows. Dogs bark. There are coyotes. There are wild dogs. There are all sorts of animals out there. My dogs protect the house, the cows, and all of this other stuff. There gonna be a restriction on animals or something that we're gonna propose later. It's kinda scary. We already live in a, a time that's, uh, unsure time. We, we, we're living in a, in a, in a situation where we don't really know what's gonna happen tomorrow all over this country, let alone just Rankin County of Mississippi. Help us here in our little neck of the woods. We can't do anything about what's happening in Washington, but we can control what's happening in Rankin County. You all are in charge of that. Think about us. Think about what you want for your children and for your grandchildren. We want the same thing, just to be able to live peacefully, to plan for our future, to give to our children. Some of us don't have land like you all have, and I know Mr. Gaines up there, supervisor, he's my supervisor out there at Leesburg. Saw that big field he got out there and all them tractors and stuff that he, 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 he harvest, he a farmer. He came to the water meeting up there. I was a board member at Leesburg Water Association. We, we talked before. And we see that you all might have more property, hundreds of acres of land that you can leave to your children, but you're gonna limit it us to, we have to have more than five acres. If we don't have the twenty acres, we can't compete with that if we have three children, four children. Give us a break. We thank you for what you did today.
We, we appreciate your service.
Yeah, we thank you for what you did today. I did twenty-four years in there, because I love this country. And I moved to Rankin County because I love Rankin County. It's a beautiful place. They have so much to offer to everybody. Let us just live in peace and harmony, and just every decision that you make, think about, is this best for my own personal family? Is this what I want them to have? Or do I want them to live under these strenuous rules and regulations that are being set? We're not thinking about, Steve know that, uh, the, the building out in Leesburg, it's, it's a growing place. All pisked and everywhere else down through there, but we don't want that right away.
Thank you.
I like where I live in. I love where I live in. I love my little few acres of land. It was nine hundred and sixty acre once upon a time. But I, I like my little place where I live in, and I thank God for you all, and keep putting God first, and then y'all will make the right decisions. I thank you.
How y'all doing? My name's Andrew Baldwin. I live in the city of Brandon. I don't live out in the county yet. My wife and I have been looking at places out in the county. My daughter goes east Rankin. I coached your stepdaughter in softball about four years ago. Lot of y'all Farm Bureau members, I'm sure. And one thing you know about Farm Bureau agents, we like to take care of Federation members. The fact that a private citizen had a post about this on social media to get the outrage is ridiculous. Y'all aren't, y'all aren't posting about it. There's, you know, there, there needs to be something adopted, where before y'all, at this point, before y'all pass any type of ordinance, before you pass any type of law, you've gotta make it public. And I get it, we got the little newspaper there, hey, everything's public record, but you've heard from all these people. I imagine you're the attorney, right? Okay, attorneys do something, attorneys do something that, that a lot of people don't understand. They write things in legal jargon, and common folk, for the most part, can't understand a word of it. I've been divorced, been to Chancery Court, and I gotta ask my attorney a hundred times, what's that mean? Right? Look, y'all had everybody up here fussing at you. Okay, I understand that I'm an insurance agent. Every time rates go up, we get people fussing at us. I completely get that. And it's the last thing you wanna continue to hear. But at this point, it's just like when you had a kid. A kid does something wrong, that trust gets taken away. Right? Now y'all gotta build that trust back. My wife and I, my daughter goes east Rankin, so we've been looking at trying to get out to the Pele Hachi area, okay? I don't wanna move out to the country in Rankin County if I gotta worry about my supervisors telling me what to do, what I, what I can do with my land. There's a reason. Back, there was, there was a big, big time war fought back in the seventeen hundreds. I don't know if y'all remember that. This country was founded on it, and it was not being told what to do by the government. I don't know if y'all been watching the climate over the past couple of years, especially this last election. Whether you're Democrat, whether you're Republican, whether you're independent, it don't matter. You can tell everybody's sick of government. Everybody's sick of people that sit behind a desk right there, being told what to do on their own land. Ain't nobody back here pay y'all's bills, and y'all don't pay nobody else's bills. Before you make decisions, understand, y'all been given a great power of responsibility. Before you make a decision, your job is to think about every person in the county, not just the people that might move into the county and what kinda tax implications that has. Because let's be honest, half of this stuff was due to that. I see it. A lot of this is due to the growth that Rankin County is getting, and that's great. I grew up in Heinz County, and look, sorry, guys, when I grew up in Heinz County, you didn't wanna move to Rankin County, right? That's what everybody said, and it's funny that everybody I grew up with, we either in Madison County or Rankin County now, okay? Half of you know this was wrong. Mr. Bishop, I sat there, I was sitting right over there, and I watched you put your head down just like this, when Mr. Gaines made that comment about government, because you knew right then, that ain't right. We already overreached. Okay, you're not God. On top of that, I, I get this is, this is the board of supervisors' room. This is where y'all have y'all's meetings, all that kinda stuff. Man, I don't, I'm not gonna pretend to, to say or think that I know what y'all can do about that. And please don't go build a bigger building. I don't want any taxes going up, right? But maybe there's another building inside Rankin County. I know there's one in the city of Brandon that y'all could have used. Because there was tons of people, and I, hey, I get it, half of them were calling for y'all's head outside in that foyer. I mean, when I pulled up, there was people walking out, we'll just elect them out, this and that. Hey, whatever. But why, why are we in this little big room? You got people, you got people that have been standing for two or three hours. There's no water outside. There's no, there's nothing. Your job is to take care of the constituents of Rankin County. My job as an insurance agent, your job as sheriff, is to take care of people. That's what we're supposed to do. In fact, in the Bible, it talks about being a servant, and at no point in time in any of this stuff that y'all served anybody. Actually, let me take that back. Y'all served somebody. This was serving someone. We just don't know who that was. We just don't know who that was, to be a hundred percent honest. Cause I'm gonna say this, for you to sit there and say, put in there, you gotta have five acres to build a house, whatever the case may be. Do you know the cost of land in Rankin County right now? You gonna put a lot of people to Scott County. Is that, do y'all wanna lose tax constituents? Cause that's what's gonna end up happening. If me, if I can't afford five acres, but hey, I can afford this three acre plot right here. And that's enough for me, my wife and my daughter. How do you get to tell me I can't build a house? That ain't right. Who made you God? This land, I, I got a question. Any of y'all serving the military? Nope? So how do any of you get to sit there and tell anybody else out here what to do? Cause ain't none of you watch people shed blood for nothing. The man that just spoke did? And I don't get that. So I, I, look, y'all been fussed at all day. I can appreciate the fact that y'all are sitting up there taking it. Sid, I saw your post on Facebook. I can appreciate the fact that as a man, you stepped up and said, I should not have voted this in. Now shouldn't I have done, I should've done more to let this, not, not get this to pass. I do not think that most of y'all thought you were gonna get the reaction that you did. Because let's be honest, as citizens in the United States of America, we let a lot of things go. We don't listen, we don't watch. We sit at home in front of our TV and we talk about, we fuss about everything, but we don't do nothing about it. I don't know if y'all been watching over the last year and a half, but there's a lot of people doing stuff about stuff. I would get on the right side of that. Cause if not, you not gonna be a supervisor. And here's the thing. You look, somebody said something earlier about Heinz County. We, I think Heinz County passed a law like this on mobile homes. No, it didn't. I grew up in Heinz County. Heck, I work in Heinz County now. No, it didn't. But do we wanna be like Heinz County? Like, I don't mean that ugly by any means. I'm from Clinton, born and raised, drew up. But yeah, I'm not moving back. All right, and I, again, I don't mean that ugly, but the reason Jackson's the way it is is cause of the politicians. You got everybody in Jackson moving out. And I'm sure that this had something to do with that. Y'all are trying to protect what's in the county and I get that. But let's not be underhanded. So I, I'll be honest with you. I really think one of you should come up with a referendum memo, something that requires, the next time y'all are gonna pass any ordinance from here on out. Has to have a week waiting period, two week waiting period and it has to be made public. And not by some five by six ad in the paper that nobody reads. I don't mean this by any means, right? Some of these people probably still read the paper. I ain't picked up a paper since I was eleven years old. My grandfather told me to hand it to him. Okay, we live in a day technology. Get a Facebook page, post everything on Facebook, give everybody a chance to actually see it. And honestly, I really think that when it comes to things like this and you messing with folks' property. There should be something in there that where y'all are saying, we have to have a vote in the county. Hold a special election. Because y'all represent everybody here. And again, yes, I live in the city. And, and I saw that earlier when that young lady came up here, uh, um, sorry, Brandon's in the city, in, in the county of Rankin, right? You the chief law enforcement officer, you're right. Okay. It don't matter if it's Flowood, Brandon, Pearl, if it's a city constituent, they still get to come talk to you. So y'all need to figure out something. Cause I don't know if you saw the other five hundred people outside, but they calling for your head. So I do appreciate y'all sitting up here. Nobody's gotten our rate, nobody's gotten mad. And I can, I can tell you, that's, that's hard to do, right? It's hard to hold you cool. You, you laughing cause you done swallowed it a couple of times, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, probably even with me and that's fine. But my point on that is, is I do thank y'all for that. I appreciate y'all having calm heads. But man, y'all really made a boo-boo right here, didn't you? Thanks, thank y'all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Tanya. I'm on the, by you seeing.
Oh, you voted for me? Oh, thank you. What about next time?
I don't know.
Okay.
You had an honest face. That's what made, usually I go for faces. I'm a pretty good judge of character, but I don't know. I had to take that back. But um, when I first heard about it, I'm on the Real Talk Rankin Page. And I started feeling like when Jesus got crucified and they went to the Garden of Justifica and they took him. And I felt like y'all did this in the, in the darkness of the night and y'all came in and did y'all decision. And I'm like, man, this ain't right. Cause I stay in a mobile home. And when I got my mobile home, before I got it, I was living in my granny's old nineteen thirty something Jim Walker home. It didn't have any central heat and air. I was praying for somewhere to, to live. I had five kids. And the house didn't have any heat and didn't have any uh air. Got one bedroom. And would freeze in the wintertime and burn up in the summertime. So I prayed about it. I said, Lord, if you could just bless me with a house with central heat and air and enough bathrooms. And then we got blessed with the mobile home. Had five bedrooms, three baths. More than enough, you know? And when I saw this, I was like, Lord, thank you. Because this is the house that the Lord blessed us with, me and my family. Then I seen this post. I had one day to sign the petition. I said, I don't even know if I'm in the zone or not, but I'm coming for everybody who has a mobile home. I'm coming to be a voice for that person, you know? And I think what y'all done was the worst thing I've ever seen in my life. That's all I could think about. So who can afford to get a trailer every seven years? So that was in my mind. Who can afford to get a new home every seven years? That's what, from what I was reading, that's what I understood. We always have to do, get somewhere to, to live.
And, and that's what a lot of people, right. They was thinking that every seven years and that never was the case, you know?
That's what I was thinking.
And there was a lot of misinformation, you know, that gets turned around, the time it gets through Facebook and people say this, you know? There was a lot of that out there that wasn't accurate, you know, and.
But then it got even further. You have, you can't have this on your property, you can't have that. Then I didn't even like that. I said, when I got my deed to my property, it didn't say, it says Alfred and Tanya. It didn't say Sid, Jay, Steve, Brad, Scott. It didn't say nobody else's names on the, on the deed but me. I don't want nobody telling me what I can do with my land because I paid for it. I worked hard. I was the one that was working at UMC and messed up my back and became disabled. Messed up my neck. Now I got uh digestive dis- disease in my spine, my neck. I'm one of this disabled, but the hard work that I had to do and I'm, I'm left in the shape that I'm in for the rest of my life. Not, none of y'all got to deal with it. So now I'm in the situation that I am, that I'm in because of me. You see what I'm saying? And not nobody else. So I got what I can afford for, for us. You know, and it's not fair, it's not fair that y'all sit here. Y'all got y'all houses and stuff that y'all got, probably got big old, pretty nice mansion houses. But I like what I got because that's what I want. When I, my house is a, is nice. When I go look at another house, you, the, to me, mobile home houses, it's like almost three thousand square foot each of a house. You probably got your big house, my bedroom probably bigger than yours. You see what I'm saying? Cause the houses, they make them, they're bigger. You know, to me, they're bigger on the inside than most houses. And a lot of people get what they like because they like them. If my house probably been there longer than your, your house, if somebody move in beside me and get to my house, my house was there first. If you didn't like what, where, you don't like my house, they don't move beside me. Don't get your house built beside where my house is. Go somewhere else. If you wanna be somewhere fancy, go out, get you a island and, and live on an island, a secluded island. And you ain't got to worry about who's beside you or, or none of that kinda stuff. That's, that's just how I feel.
All right.
You know? And I, I thank y'all for listening.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Tony Womack. This is Apple. My, I'm my little sister Melanie. And I'm gonna give y'all a little change of pace here. It's kind of amazing seeing this. I'm remembering something that I heard in high school. Um, and you know, we all think of the First Amendment's rights as our most prized rights. But James Madison, the father of the Constitution, believed that our property rights, our Fifth Amendment's rights are the foundational rights, all of the rights that we have. What you see here today is a manifestation of that understanding.
Mr. Womack, is, is this have to do the, the Florence buyer and partway?
It does indeed.
Okay, if we could, we just gonna uh try to get through the, the people that signed in, you know, on the mobile home and stuff. And then we, we get, get to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you know about how long, how many more people?
I, I don't know how many more, but we're, we're trying to get through with them and then, then we will.
They were signed up.
Right.
Well, I'm signed up too.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
But you are gonna get back to us.
Yes, yes.
Okay, we're staying.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
We are too.
My name is Stephen Lawson. I'm a welder, fabricator. Wicker Brothers, my wife's a school teacher. We own almost three and a half acres off East Tucker. We're putting a mobile home and I, I've heard y'all say that, you know, we're not saying, you know, you can't do this or you, you, we ain't gonna make you move your houses, but we just bought a house for our family that didn't meet them requirements. All right, and under this ordinance, you know, five years down the road, if we needed to add a room on, we were not gonna be able to do that.
That, that, that wasn't true.
Yeah, you, you would, you would be able to. Did I talk to you about putting it?
Yeah, we, we talked. I was, I was a little angry the first time we talked.
And I approved it and, and told you, I, I, you know, I worked with you. I said, hey, you know, you didn't know about it. I approved it. And give you permission to, to go ahead and, and place a mobile home there.
Yeah, I mean, there was a lot, a lot of stuff, you know, as, as I went into it that concerned me. But um, my biggest concern is I've lived in Rankin County pretty much my whole life. I've never heard a date and time of any Rankin County supervisor meeting of, you know, and like I said, nobody reads the paper anymore. Well, there, there's too many ways to get this stuff out public. I, I don't understand why it's not. And I just wanna say that I preach to my kids all the time, trust and integrity. You can't have one without the other. And unfortunately, this, you know, a lot of that was lost with this. I don't know if y'all read all these bills before y'all pass them or not, or I don't know who writes. But it, it, I don't, I don't know what needs to happen, but we need a system to get better and former. If, if people don't know, they can't tell you what they want.
Right, and we're working on that, you know, to get the, the public informed. You own a page so they can go to it and see, so we can put, put stuff out there to inform them, you know, to inform everyone.
Yes, sir. Well, and I hate that, you know, it had to come to this and everybody had to get so mad.
Right.
But uh, thank y'all for having the meeting and listening to us today.
Right.
Thank you for rescinding.
Thank you.
My name's Robert Lewis. I live in District Three, Mr. Calhoun's district. And I'll tell you first, I thank everyone who's for the job you have done. Ninety-five percent of the time, I'm in favor of whatever you do. This one kinda got under my skin, I have to admit, and I heard about it secondhand, thirdhand, or whatever. And my questions as a cons- and concerns, I've been voiced about six times already, so this is gonna be short. Uh, the only suggestion I would have in the future is let's try to get out to the public and have public meetings maybe in each district. For whoever wants to attend, it may not be but five people show up, but that'll be five people that, that are able to voice their opinion. And here y'all is reason for doing whatever you do, whether it's painting stripes in the middle of the road or whatever. Uh, and, and that's, that's my main concern and I think that would've made it a, a whole lot better. Not to say we're gonna shoot this down, but at least have a chance to talk to you about it before y'all voted on it. And I did not read a hundred and seventy-three pages of this and I don't plan on doing it. Uh, I'm past all that. But that's all I wanna say is, you know, give us more, give us an, an open door to respond to you. Again, y'all were elected to represent everybody in this room. That's already been said it is at times. But that's just my concern. Now let us know what's going on and you know, things are brought here, I will. Uh, this, I've got ten acres down in Mr. Calhoun's district. So some of you say, well, that doesn't apply to you anyway. It's not gonna be a big deal. Well, if it's a two acre or a five acre deal now, five years from now, it may be ten acres or twenty acres. And that's my concern. I wanna see how it grows. And uh, anyway, I thank y'all for what you've done. I thank you for being here for this meeting and I thank these people for being quiet and well behaved this morning.
Good morning. Uh, my name's Jonathan Jones. Uh, Mr. Gaines is my supervisor. My uh, my story is uh probably a little unique, but we, we bought uh about twenty years ago in Rankin County. Um, and it was a, it was a, a sub parcel with a, with an out parcel next to it. We ended up fusing those together and it had a little, little sixteen by eighty uh single wide trailer on it. And uh, as our family grew, we realized that we needed a bigger house. So we ended up uh approaching the county to uh get our house upgraded. Because we were found that uh in uh twenty eleven, I believe, was the mobile home rule that was made that, that they had to be um, uh certain restrictions were placed on them finally in the beginning there. Uh, so we started looking into modular house. Uh, long story short, we put a modular house on our property uh that suited our family. Um, it was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars uh on top of the forty thousand we rolled in from the land that was, that had the trailer on it from before. And we ended up uh making our, our little uh three acre property a six acre property with double the size modular house on it. Um, and we liked uh, we, we call it our slice of heaven. We love Rankin County. We couldn't be happier here. And we love it so much that we bought the houses on either side of us so that we could have them for our children one day. They both have mobile homes on their properties as well. One of them's only one and a half acres, which falls under these rules. And the other one was three acres, which also falls under these rules. Um, and to put modular houses on them later, which has not been done, wouldn't, would've almost been impossible going forward with these rules. Um, we looked into brick and stick house when we built our house. The hundred and twenty thousand we spent on our house, or rather a hundred and thirty um was paled in comparison to the three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars I was quoted for the same floor plan of a brick and stick house. Um, so for our money, we, we decided to move that way. Um, and we were assured by the county when we upgraded our, our mobile home to a modular home that we were in a mobile home area. Uh, we live on a, a small private road in, in the east county that has twelve mobile homes on it. Um, well, uh, and they've been swapped out for modular homes slowly. Uh, there's only one approved structure, one real house on that, on that road. And I don't think it sits on enough land uh to live over the rules that, that were just uh rescinded. So we, we do thank you gentlemen for rescinding that. Um, I do have to wonder, uh, the, the questions in my mind came to how this came to be. Who, whose idea was it in the first place? What are the, what are the minutes that got it to pass? Um, and what was the full process that brought it to this point? Um, I heard that one of the gentlemen in the board uh mentioned that this was being blown out of proportion. And I would invite you to uh review this tape that we're making today and see if it was a big deal to us. We love Rankin County. We think that uh, uh, when people call me, you know how y'all get those phone calls? Hey, would you like to buy, would you like to sell your property? And you're like, click. I tell them, no, I'm gonna die here. This is my place. I, I fought for this. I, I got it when I was twenty-six years old, a young father. Um, we're still paying it off because we've made some upgrades to it. And the, the rules that we just read over, I couldn't read all hundred and seventy something pages of it either. Um, but what I did read of it scared the bejesus out of me. It made me feel like this was some kind of um, a situation that you would hear about coming out of the county supervisory board of some county in California. But I'm here to say, please, for the love of God, do not California my Rankin County. We love- We love it just the way it is, and thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, I just wanted to point out, we've had public comment open now for ninety minutes of our board meeting. I just wanted to remind you that we've got a significant agenda that has to be covered today, and so it'd be helpful.
We're gonna let, we're gonna let the people speak.
Is that true?
Yes.
My name's Jeff Quick, I live in District One, Mr. Scarborough. I'm not gonna tell you my story, I'm not gonna fuss at you, a lot of people have. A lot of people have speculated whose interest this was passed in. A lot of people have said they wanna give you the opportunity to earn trust back that you've lost. I wanna, would like to make a suggestion that you do make it public of what started this proposal to begin with. I understand there's, it's out there to be found. It's also been stated that a lot of people don't have access to that. A lot of people, they don't get their news source directly from where this is made public. So in good faith, if you'd like to make a step towards earning the trust back that most people believe that you've lost, make that very public. Don't just tell us where we can find it. You put it out there where we ain't got a choice but to find it. So just a recommendation that you, if you are sincere about moving forward, you admit a mistake, let's make it right.
Well, and that's why we're, like I said, I told you earlier, we're working on a web page, you know, to do that, you know? And that's what we're working on to get that out there, but like I say, it's not out there yet, but we're getting close on it to having it done.
I just, I've heard a lot of people say that, earn the trust back, I hadn't heard anybody give recommendations on how, so I just thought it'd be fair to give you one from a constituent of yours.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on the?
Hey, I would like to say something, I'm not on the list, and I will take the second.
Okay.
I sure will, I don't need the mic though.
My name is Brooke Williams, and I live in your district, Mr. Gaines, and I actually campaigned for you, so I'm kind of disappointed. I live in the city, I do not have a trailer. This does not affect me right now, but I have a grown son, who it may affect. So we all live in this county, and we want things to be done right, and fair, and ethical, and with integrity always at the forefront. That's not too much to ask. There is no way anybody in this room can say that this process was appropriate, because it was not. We all know that, and I think, just like the last gentleman said, the first thing you need to do is write something out for the citizens and explain how this kind of process could've moved this way. And no one in the county seemed to be of concern for you all. Because there's a lot of people that are affected, I'm not, and I'm lucky. But it could be something different next time. There should always be a safeguard when you're talking about affecting people's lives, the way that they live. This is about people's money? I mean, we are in a crisis all over the world right now. So the best thing you can do is always tell the truth. I know that's hard for politicians, but that's the best thing to do. And, and I think if you wanna win the trust back of all these people that were here today, or people on the internet, is be upfront, tell your side of the story. Let people gather information and understand themselves, what you're trying to do. Because sometimes there may be a backstory, but we don't know that, because none of you communicated that. Communication is key, and if you as a board don't do it, then you should probably designate your administrator to do it. Somebody needs to be talking to the people. It's just the right thing to do, and it's a Christian thing to do, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I'm gonna speak regarding the Gunner Road Extension Project. For quite some time, I apologize to you, I need to read this because it's too complicated to speak on extemporaneously, and I don't read well aloud. But for quite some time now, I've been trying my best to get through to the folks involved in the acquisition of my family home.
Hey, Mr. Womack, now, I hate to interrupt you, I just got one thing to say. If everybody, there's a bottle of water out there by the, where you come in, if somebody wants a bottle of water, somebody said that, you know, to get a drink or something, I know it's hot in here, but after, there's a bottle of water after the door there, y'all would.
Mr. Paul was asking a question.
Mr. Chairman, are you finished with the testimony on the zoning ordinance? Because I was gonna go ahead and let these people, some of these people gotta get back to work.
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all got started on something.
Right. Yes, ma'am.
I was gonna ask you, just two questions.
We're not asking questions, remember, you can have somebody make a statement.
Well, let Mr. Tony get finished.
For quite some time now, Sid, did you inform the other gentlemen of the board what we discussed on April the twenty-second?
Yes, I.
I know you did, Mr. Slade.
I gave it to Mr. Slade, I gave him the information, and I told him there's a discrepancy on boundary lines of the survey. And like I said, I, like I told you, I'm not a licensed engineer, surveyor, or attorney, and I got them looking into that.
Well, for some time now, I've been trying to get through to the folks who are involved in the acquisition of my family home at twenty-one ninety-seven Highway Forty-Nine South, to get them to understand the acreage of my family property has been significantly understated. They will not listen. As a result, the supposed fair market value offer that my family received on February of 2025 could not possibly establish a true fair market value. And quite simply, it's not a valid good faith offer. My family cannot and will not validate it by responding to what is inherently flawed document. The incorrect acreage, roughly a quarter-acre deficit, originated from the project survey drawn up by Benchmark Engineering. This survey is invalid and does not reflect historical deeds or the observable physical reality of our property. I want to invite you guys to come to my family home today and see for yourself, with your own eyes, that this benchmark survey is invalid on its face. I promise you, even a six-year-old could see that what I'm saying is true. After the May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two public hearing, I wrote to Benchmark, and I told them our property was one point nine seven acres. This was according to the Rankin County tax records and what we've been paying in taxes for the past fifty-eight years. And personally, I calculate our property to be roughly one point nine four acres, but the county tax roll shows a bit higher. Subsequently, in numerous meetings with the appraiser, Caleb Coontz of R O W and B B G, Greg Thompson of R O W, and Right-of-Wait Agent John Gresham, also of R O W, I have repeatedly explained the acreage and their acquisition materials is incorrect. I have told them the benchmark survey is invalid, and the acreage is flat out wrong. They will not listen to me to this day. Had I only considered for a moment the possibility that this old red knight might actually be on to something, might actually know a little bit of something about my own family property, we would not be in this big steaming mess we are in right now at this very moment. Where you guys, the Rankin County Board of Supervisors, have illegally expropriated portions of my family's property without paying us a single penny in compensation. Effectively, you guys have stolen our property. And not just one time, but on two separate occasions, on December twenty-fourth and December fourteenth of 2024. And we're not just talking pocket change here, we're looking at over a hundred thousand dollars worth of property stolen. Now, I'll finish up with that, but.
But, sir, Mr.?
Now, please let me finish.
Okay.
If you don't mind. All, or at least, at least a majority of you, signed off on this. But I truly cannot believe you had a clue what you were actually signing. I mean, this stuff, you know, this deed stuff is complicated, and I certainly don't believe you did. I have to believe you hired people at the lowest bid trusting they would do a professional quality job at a bargain price. Nonetheless, by your actions, you guys have violated the Fifth Amendment of the United States Constitution and fundamentally violated my family's civil rights. It did not have to be this way. Assuming I understand correctly, whenever the accuracy of an acquisition survey is challenged by a landowner in a federally funded project, the right-of-wait agent is obliged by Federal Highway Administration regulations to arrange a new independent survey of the property through the project supervisor or district coordinator. To my knowledge, this has not happened. So I'm hoping all of you guys will help my family out so we can remedy this situation without unnecessary complication. Please get our property resuraveled, assuming you don't trust any of the three surveys we can show you that dispute the benchmark survey. And most of all, we want our property back, as every one of you would want your property back. I believe with then we can move forward as reasonable people and come to an agreement fair to everybody. We're not trying to stand in the way of progress. But let me say that henceforth, my family is not comfortable working with I R O W or B B G. We simply do not trust they have the wherewithal to fairly and accurately evaluate our property or the personal commitment to safeguard our Fifth Amendment rights. Based on recent communication, there appears to be ill will between us, potentially undermining any unbiased outcome. And under the circumstances, I hope you can understand, we cannot trust Benchmark to prepare a new survey. And like I say, please, we'll stop on our way and get iced tea and cookies, come to my property. I promise you, in thirty seconds, you'll see that, and I'm gonna give these to you right now, this survey right here absolutely bears no resemblance to reality. It is a hallucination.
Give it to one of our attorney over there too, where he can see it. Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Can I count on you guys to do something? Will you come to my house today?
I don't know if we're gonna get out of here today.
It don't matter what time it is, as long as it's daylight, you know where it is, right across from Gunner Road. And I tell you, you stand there, Sid, you stood there, but Sid, you know what you said? You said, "I'm not a surveyor, I'm not attorney, I don't know what to do, you're the boss."
Right, well, I can't.
Sid, you're the boss.
I can't dispute when a licensed surveyor surveyed something.
You saw what you saw with your own eyes.
Right, but I can't argue with them, that's why I told you they're handling this.
If you can't believe your own eyes, Sid, what could you believe?
I believe what you showed me, but I gotta go off, when somebody stamp, when an engineer stamp and surveyed it.
Did you have a chance?
Gentlemen, if we can, if we can, I think we've heard what we need to hear. But let's move on, we've got other people here that are still on the mobile home ordinance, and I think we need to respect their time as well.
I agree.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Peter Jenkins, and I do have a mobile home in the Bragg Street area, number four seventy-one. And my only two concerns, and I do appreciate you guys for rescinding that, is that even in my family, we come from a big family, and we're not, everybody does not have five acres. So my only statement of concern, and again, you guys already rescinded, was how could you make a sound decision about mobile homes being on five acres of land when you go into a subdivision and you spend hundreds of thousands for a lot? That's it. Also, you have three, four different mobile home companies in this county, in Pearl, that service so many different areas that you're affecting those too. So my only concern was the five acres of land, because that's a lot. Five acres, I'm not even gonna mow two of those acres. So that is a lot, when you look at individuals going into subdivisions, spending hundreds of thousands, and they're only having a lot.
I believe the five acres was only in Overlay District.
Those, and I'm here.
Right.
In the farming area.
In District Four, but as the rest of the county, like my whole district or the rest of my, I mean, it didn't affect, you didn't have to have five acres. And that's where a little bit of, you know, nobody, you know, the five acres didn't go into effect.
Okay.
Like my whole district, I mean.
I'm North Brandon.
That's why I say in District Four or not, you know.
The overlay applies to Ag Zone property, I believe Bragg Street property is zone residential. So this would not, even your overlay district would not affect residentially zoned properties. It applies only to Ag properties.
Right, alright.
And again, even for those citizens, I do just think five acres is a lot.
Right.
You can't even go into a subdivision and purchase five acres of land buying a two or three hundred thousand dollar home.
Agreed.
So just for a mobile home, it didn't matter what district it's in, overlay, underlay, anyone, five acres is a lot of land. A lot of land, when you have people that purchased back then two acres, two point five, to be able to put the mobile home and the treatment system there, that is a lot, you know? And again, we have subdivisions popping up everywhere, and they don't even get an acre of land, and you want us to have, are those individuals to have five, just to put?
Well, those subdivisions are on a treatment system, a sewer system, where most of your rural part of the Rankin County doesn't have that opportunity to get on a.
A public system.
Public.
So that's the reason for the significant amount of acres.
It's part of it.
Okay.
There are other reasons as well. One being that there is a strong desire to wanna protect our agricultural property, that is especially in that northeast quadrant. That's where the vast majority of our row crop agriculture, our cattle farming operations still exist today. And so there's a farming community that has significant interests as well in making sure that there's a preservation or a protection of large tracts of property that can be row cropped, that can be used for cattle operations, that can be used for timber operations. So there's, there are competing interests that this board is obligated to kind of think about. And so the application of the zoning overlay in areas that are currently zoned agriculture was from the standpoint of trying to protect that rural feel and the rural nature of our northeast quadrant.
Thank you for the explanation that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
How y'all doing today? My name Leon Seals, grew up in Rankin County my whole life, this is all I know, Rankin County. And wanted to start my family here, and basically end up buying some property, which is in Pearl. We got annexed to the city of Pearl, it used to be Rankin County. Bought the property, worst mistake of my life. Ever since then, I've been in jail multiple times over my property, I've been fined over my property. I come try to get help, everyone act like they can't read a survey. I had my property surveyed by guest consulting, they act like they can't read a survey. I had the property, I had a survey done, and I also had a, what's the word for it? Survey and they said the survey wasn't good enough, so I got, went back to nineteen eighty-three, title search. Title search done, everything. And to this day, thirty, forty thousand dollars later, I'm still in court. I heard you say earlier, can't dispute. I heard you say earlier, can't dispute a survey, with my survey still being disputed in court. And I'm still hiring attorneys to this day, and I don't understand, I was fine to claim my property, got arrested for trying to claim my property. Now I got one of the biggest criminal records probably ever, never been into it with the law enforcement.
Are you, who arrested you, the county or city of Pearl?
Pearl, Pearl, city of Pearl, now my stuff has been transferred to the county, and I've been getting found guilty in the county because everybody working together. The mayor of Pearl is working with everybody in the county, which I have all the proof, hundred percent proof of everything. And so now, it's to the point where it got so big, everybody knew about it, nobody know what to do, and I'm still in court to this day over a piece of property where I got the survey. When I'm paying taxes, if I go on my property today, it's a possibility I might get arrested. But I'm paying taxes, and nobody could give me no answers, I've been trying to get answers for the last three years, and thirty, forty thousand in the hole, and to this day, I still don't know what needs to be done.
Gentlemen, I, I think maybe, um, trying to find out a little bit of information and, and communicate directly with representatives of the city of Pearl and try to determine what, what Mr. Seals' situation is, is about what, that's all we can offer, is to look into it and, and see if there's some, s- some information that we don't know, that Mr. Seals may not know, that we can uncover uh, and maybe help move this process forward, so.
Leon Seals know he paying taxes, so Leon Seals know that. And nobody is stopping me from paying taxes, they collecting my money every year. Leon Seals know he got a survey, so Leon know where his mark is at on his property. Leon Seals know he got a title search, so I don't know what else is to know, really.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't like to just get with the city of Pearl and.
So do I have, like supervisors, is, even though I'm in Pearl, is one of the supervisors over, who my supervisor?
They make their own ordinances and they got their own.
I stay on Sweet Home Church Road. I'm pretty sure I'd have seen you before in Pearl a lot of time.
Yes, sir.
Uh-huh. So you're pretty familiar with Jake Wondom?
Yes, sir.
Uh-huh. Definitely, I got text messages where I've been talking to him, and actually, his buddies are on my property. His son was Jake Wondom's best man at his wedding, so that's where the problem's coming in at. And it's a buddy-buddy system going on, and I've been charged with crimes that I didn't commit and found guilty. One crime I found guilty of, I mean, this just, this just explaining, for no driver license. And I showed my driver license in court, and I still was found guilty of no driver license. So, so it don't make sense to me, like, that's how I know for sure the buddy-buddy system going on, and I can't get nothing did.
Well, can you give us the opportunity to look into it?
Right, I wanna know, can I go on my property today without being arrested?
We can't make that decision.
Y'all can't make a decision if I can go on my property or not?
I mean, that's, that's. That's the city of Pearl.
No, I just wanna know, can I go on my property, if my name on the property, can I go on it right now? Or, or is y'all gonna stop me from paying taxes till we get this situated? Can y'all hold the taxes till we get it situated?
Air, is it more than one person's name, is it just your name?
Just me and my wife.
Is it, who told you you couldn't go on the property?
I get arrested.
But who told you you cannot go on the property?
I'm scared to go on it now, 'cause I get arrested.
Yeah, but you, you have a right to go on to your, to your property.
You would think, that's what I think.
I get with Jay Bishop, you know, we're called Bear. Can I be on your property, can't nobody stop you?
Right.
Does the judge orders you, you have some order?
No, I ain't got nothing.
I ain't have no powers, I don't like that, oh, wait, they said you gotta stay away?
My property ain't even in court.
Hey, and anyone else is coming up, let's just stick to the mobile home or ordinances that.
And I got a mobile home, this, this pretty much the ordinance, all this relate to ordinance, I got fire and the cleaning.
It's totally different. Okay, come on.
Good morning. My name is Mary Jo Perry, I live in Pilahatchee, my husband and I have, um, an eighty acre farm there, where we have cattle and poultry. Um, since the board admitted that they made a mistake, and that the mistake was made at the advice of the board attorney, uh, we would like to see consideration to replace the county attorney. This was huge and frankly inexcusable mistake. Steve, my husband and I called you last October, because we were dealing with this same issue, the conservative coalition was, in Lee County. And we asked you specifically if this was happening here, and you told me no, that you had not heard anything about it. Um, so when it finally did come up in Rankin County, as we predicted that it might, because this, this same agenda is going county to county around the state. Not only did you not check in with us as your constituents, but you voted to adopt it. This experience has served as a reminder that we, as the citizens, have a responsibility to stay engaged and watch our elected officials more closely. While we appreciate that you rescinded this mistake, we will not forget it next election time. Thank you.
Well, I, I would like to say one thing, I did admit to a mistake, but I, when I admitted to it, it was my mistake. I didn't say it was a lawyer's mistake, it's my mistake for not reading it, understanding it, and when I voted on it. So I'm not throwing anybody under the bus because y'all elected me to make the decision, hey, I'm the one voted on it. So I'm not blaming anybody else as far.
I understand, I have, I have experience at our state capitol with the attorneys in the basement who draft legislation that, that our legislators send down, getting changed when it's down there, because they're influenced by lobbyists.
Right.
So we're paying attention, and this, while it has been rescinded, it got rescinded because we caught it. If it wasn't caught, we would be living under it.
Right.
And that's not okay.
Right, and I understand.
Forgive you as your sister in Christ.
Right.
But y'all just didn't do your job, so.
Correct, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna thank you for taking the time to listen to the public, I know it's been a long time. Um, all of you have my cell phone, I certainly have all of yours, I hope when we work on other land use, you will call me, just like back in two thousand and ten, they called, we sat down, we worked with y'all. Uh, I'm willing to do anything I can to help with this, but I wanna, I wanna say thank you for, first of all, I always told you, thank you for your vote. And I, and I totally agree with you that, that social media today, you can see a lot of things on there. But there should never be any threats for any family. Um, I understand that, my husband was a politician, and he was a good one. But you do serve the people, and when you run for office, that puts you out there, and y'all all know that. But there is no room for rudeness, there's no room for someone attacking you personally or your family. That's, today, we had a decent meeting, we had, you allowed people to come up here and speak, that's what America's about, what happened today. And I am proud to live in Rankin County, I'm proud to be a citizen, I thank these people for coming, but I do wanna say thank you again for taking the time to listen to us. You have a blessed day.
Thank you. Yeah, she's been waiting patiently.
I just have one more question, I'm not, I think everything else has been said, I was asked, like I said, I'm a realtor, so I wanna serve the public as well, and that's why I'm here. And I've got a lot of customers right now that are buying trailers, buying land, you know, all of it. Um, but I was asked to ask the question, I guess, um, about the mobile home, if there is a, like a tornado or a storm or something, and a tree falls on your mobile home and it damages it, or it's over fifty percent damaged, can they not repair it? Or do they have to replace it with a newer mobile home and?
So they rescinded the age restriction, that's, that's been rescinded and taken off the table. So it falls under the existing ordinance as it existed on April the sixth, which would allow for, um, a given, given the, the nature of the life safety of that particular unit, as long as it can be repaired and brought up to meet all life safety codes, then it, it will be allowed to remain in grandfather status, if that's what it is, or if it's outright allowed in a, in an area, it obviously will be allowed to remain in that area. So nothing has changed because of the act to rescind now.
Okay.
Alright.
And while I have y'all's attention, real quick, I just wanna ask this for me, so I was talking about the closing that I'm supposed to have with the two acres and all of that. But, um, there's another issue I've called the, the county about, and they tried to help, but there was a, um, a woman who was buying a hundred thousand dollar, brand-new manufactured home and paying twenty-three thousand dollars for her lot, and we were supposed to close, and the day before closing, title search showed that there is apparently an H O A in Plantation Shores. And I had taken ten pictures and videos of all the stuff on this same street of trailers, barns, somebody's living in a container, and, um, the manufactured home, people that were selling her this, a single mom, um.
Triangle Acres.
Yeah.
She emailed us, I thought we took care of her.
The woman that was buying the trailer?
Yeah.
No, this is, um, in, uh, Plantation Shores, Triangle Acres is the one off Cleary.
You're right.
Yeah. So, and I know that they were trying to help me, but I don't know if y'all have any advice on what I can do, because.
Well, I'm, I guess it's, the H O A's got their own rules and.
Yeah, without getting into a whole lot of, um, of discussion, uh, that would be fact-specific. The general rule of thumb that we follow here in Rankin County is that where there is a private homeowners association that has developed an area, and they have, that association has placed restrictive covenants, which are private agreements among private property owners, where they place those restrictive covenants on those properties. We don't enforce those at the county level.
Right.
But what we do is, we don't allow somebody who is going to violate the private restrictive covenants. We don't allow them to proceed as if just coming to the county and getting permission satisfies any permission that they might have from the H O A. We, we push the pause button, call timeout, and we ask that property owner to secure permission from the H O A that would then free us up to permit whatever the land use is. We try to keep people from buying themselves a lawsuit by the H O A for violating the covenants.
Right.
We just raise the red flag.
I knew it had been rezoned, but it just, like, she said, no, we're not allowing that anymore.
Zoning only goes to a, you know, to, to some degree with respect to land use at the county level.
Okay.
That's, that should be the minimalist amount of regulation. The H O A has other restrictions that it puts in place that apply to a given area. And when an individual buys property in that area where there are restrictions by the H O A, they, they have record notice of that, those restrictions are of record, they're in the land records. So they are charged with the notice of what those restrictions are. And if they come to the county and ask for permission to do something that violates those private restrictive covenants, we push the pause button and say, you need to go to the H O A and get that straight before you come to us.
Okay.
So I'm assuming that that's where we are.
Yeah.
We're, we're in the pause button, and we're waiting for the H O A to speak on the issue. And, and if there are numerous other similar uses in that area, that it's clear and obvious that the H O A has not been enforcing.
Right.
Then that needs to be addressed, and there is a forum up the hill.
Okay.
Where that can be addressed.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else wanna speak on the ordinance? If that's it, I, I, we would like to move on further in our agenda.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming.
Y'all can stay or whatever, but we fixing at the, move. Yes, sir. I'm gonna probably be my campaign manager. Thank you for coming and speaking. Are y'all ready to proceed?
Well, I mean, we're changing.
Yeah.
Alright. Old Business. Second. Uh, Jay made a motion to approve Old Business, Brad second motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Second. Jay made a motion to approve the consent agenda. Uh, Brad seconded the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Ms. Caroline Gilbert, tax collector.
It's amazing.
Right.
I'm gonna make this as long as I can, okay? I'm kidding, can we take all three of these together, A, B, and C? They're all in reference to some distinct section land that went to land sale in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, and we're just avoiding those land sales and then, um, allowing Craig to initiate for the tax collection on those properties.
Make a motion to approve A, B, and C?
Second.
Jay made the motion to approve A, B, and C, Steve seconded the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. President, let the record reflect that your action that you just take to authorize the board attorney to proceed with collection is contingent upon who the board attorney is after, after what we just went through.
Okay, for the record, thank you. Ms. Stacy McNish, a tax assessor.
Yes, um, alright, item A, petitions to adjust the twenty-four homestead exemption supplemental rule, we're asking for, um, approval for that.
Motion approved. Second.
Brad made a motion, Steve seconded the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, we're requesting, uh, authority to change assessment for twenty-four real property assessments.
Second.
Scott made a motion, Brad seconded the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And this one, um, I was thinking it was on consent, but it should actually read, authority to pay designation fees in the amount of fifty dollars each for myself and Jeremy Bertucci to participate in the Mississippi Assessor Evaluation Exam on May twenty-ninth and thirtieth and startable, and then the authority to issue a check and pay any travel-related expenses, including hotel costs.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Made a motion, Steve seconded the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Pittman, you would like to step up to the podium, please, sir?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I would like to, uh, I'm here today to get a permission from y'all to advertise return bid on asphalt uh, for the period of July one through December thirty-first.
I make a motion approved. So we need to add that to this motion?
Do we need to add?
So what, what I would like for us to do is to have a quick motion to add to this particular item that we add our clay gravel commodity. Mike, will that get us?
Yes, sir.
Is that all we need, is asphalt and clay gravel? I'd like to ask for a motion to add that item.
Do I need rescinding?
No, sir, just, uh, just announce Brad, your motion is changed to be an add item.
My motion is to be changed to an add item, and that motion would be to add clay gravel with the, um.
Asphalt.
Asphalt.
That would be to add, be the second on Brad's motion.
Second.
Brad made a motion to add clay gravel with asphalt, uh, Steve seconded the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, my motion would be to approve the.
Now, my motion would be to approve the bids for asphalt and clay.
Second.
Brad made a motion to approve the asphalt and the clay gravel. Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Hi, Carson, road manager.
Uh I'd like to take A and B together, AT&amp;T permits. Uh do them together, make a motion.
I make a motion to approve A and B.
Second.
Steve made a motion to approve A and B. Scott seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh C is a wind stream permit for four, uh four, six, nine, all four, six, nine down Foster Road.
Motion approved.
I second it. Brad made a motion. I seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh Mr. Gaines, if you'll appease me just for a second, uh I'd like to update you on Bridges Road. Somebody made a compliment about that earlier today.
I don't think it was a compliment.
I don't think it was either. According to our records, and I mean, I've looked at the road. Again, last week, road is gravel road. It was motor grader. Over eighty tons of material was put on the road. Just wanted to let you know that we are working on Bridges Road. Uh the contractor that is doing the dirt work in there is widening the road. That was part of his conditional use permit. As he went through there, he was supposed to widen the road and then we motor grader it up. Yes, it does get a little rough at times when he's doing that piece of the pipe. But other than that, everything's satisfactory on Bridges Road.
But what's the deal with, I mean, I guess he's bringing out dirt over private property?
No, sir, he's bringing out dirt. There's a Rankin County resident that is uh hauling dirt out of there. He has a permit to haul the dirt. Everything, he is right. The man that owns the land lives in Louisiana. Uh he's contracted out with a contractor to move the dirt off, off of his place, which he's gotten permits and everything from us. The uh problem is with the other gentleman is, he's gotta have an easement. Only way he can get out is through this guy's property.
But that's something that can be handled through the.
Yeah, it's nothing for us to handle. He's got to go to court.
It's an easement dispute?
Um it's a land dispute, dude. Nothing stands to us.
This board doesn't have any authority to address what would end up being an easement by necessity. If Mr. Curse, I think that was his name, Mr. Curse.
It was Mr. Curse.
If Mr. Curse is looking for a way, a literally, a, a way to get from his landlocked property to a public road. He must move through the easement by necessity process that's spelled out by statute and it's handled through circuit court.
Right.
His land lays behind, his land don't touch bridges, don't touch Rankin. It lays in behind it. Years ago, my understanding, there was a verbal agreement that he had an easement. That man has passed on and moved on, so somebody else is in charge of laying that, this property.
He, he does have means of redress, but it's not with this board. It's with the circuit court.
Okay.
Like him.
Uh huh, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
For now, anyway.
Yeah, that's right. The first item we have is New Haven subdivision phase two. We recommend an approval of final plat and letter created in the amount of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars as a district three development.
Motion approved. Second.
Brad made a motion. Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item two is on our LSBP project sixty-one six. This was the bridges on, it's been a while, on Pleasant Street and Curse Road. Uh we recommend approval of the board order and joint letter of acceptance and authority to sign the documents. Uh construction's been done almost a year now, but state aid, it takes a while for them to go through the testing reports and all, and they signed off on all that. And now it's just time to execute the documents to accept the projects. We recommend approval of those.
That was the bridge, correct?
Yes, sir, that was the bridge on Pleasant and the bridge on Curse.
Did they get all that drainage fixed? I know they had to come back out and fix some of that riffraff.
Yes.
I'll make a motion for it.
Second.
Brad made a motion. Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Slade.
All right, John, I'm gonna move this a little closer, where I can see.
I guess it would take all years and.
No, sir, I'm, I'm gonna try to move this quickly, Mr. Cal. If you look at items A through E. You'll see that those are all to set public hearings. They are all for conditional uses or rezoning requests. Items A through E from May fifteen at nine AM. One motion would be satisfactory.
That'd be my motion, A through E.
Second.
Brad made a motion. Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item under my section, Sid, is a public hearing on the Pierce Construction Conditional Use Permit. This is a Star Road mining operation, District One property. Uh that public hearing is open. Uh Pierce Construction, Construction is seeking a conditional use permit to mine an additional fifteen acres out of a one hundred and forty-four acre parcel that's located on Star Road. Currently, they are operating under an approved conditional use permit. That allows for the mining operation that is currently being undertaken with respect to twenty-five acres. And so they have a, a conditional use in place already. This would be an additional conditional use for another fifteen acres associated with that ongoing current mining operation. Uh we have conditions that we would like to discuss with the board. I'll make those conditions. Uh I'll state those conditions for you right here at the start of our public hearing. Uh you have an hours of operation condition that you normally apply in these situations. That would be Monday through Saturday. Seven AM to seven PM Central daylight time. Uh hours of operation during Central Standard Time, Monday through Saturday, uh would be from seven AM until sunset. That is typically how we arrange for those. I want to make that clarification. It would be until sunset during standard time. That's gonna, that's, will come into effect, Sid, when we change clocks back again in fall. Uh no, no operations of any kind would be permitted on Sunday, so we try to be clear about that. We reserve Sunday for peaceful conditions in the neighborhood. All right. Uh we would require some level of dust control by the applicant. Uh the applicant's already familiar with this. Because it would also be a condition to the ongoing operations that are already permitted there. So we would require the applicant to continue with a water truck on site for dust control as needed. Traffic safety is an obligation. Trucks entering the highway must be marked with appropriate signage. Uh road maintenance, if the applicant is responsible for any kind of damage or debris on the road, that must be addressed on a daily basis by the applicant. And then the construction entrance, we require a minimum of two hundred feet of gravel. Uh on the construction entrance to preserve and protect uh the entry onto the public road and also to cut down on the mud. That would be tracked off of the site. So those would be the conditions. We proceed, no call.
One additional con- condition.
Okay.
You would, um, and it would be to have traffic control until eight thirty AM and during heavy traffic.
Okay.
Haven't we had some issues out there, Sharon?
It's very close to forty-nine.
Yeah.
Trucks backing up and people pulling up to the red light on Star Road, locked the entrance.
They pretty much entering Egress, Ingress's own state roadway.
Their exit, well, they go in the pit, you know, it's right.
On the line.
Right, it's right close to the red light and when they're coming out or when they're turning, you know, it's, it's kinda gets bottlenecked. You know, cause a lot of times the, the trucks don't pay attention, they're just going and, you know, so. We had a little control, you know, in the morning hours, uh you know, to say eight thirty to kinda help you.
I don't necessarily mean they need to get out there and drive a direct track, but I think that might cause a little bit of a problem, but. Somebody out there paying attention that if we are getting backed up in forty-nine or something, that we can keep traffic flowing. Because the other day I went through there, it was, it was, if they have one uh with the entrance, it's a dumb.
Right, somebody just needs to address, you know, because they can't tell. Sometimes you know how you, when you run the light or not run the light, but you go and then. A school bus is stopped at the railroad track where nobody knows it and they all, you know, zoom in. I swear sometimes these trucks, you know. They're, they're going and then they can't turn, you know, cars are coming, so we just need to.
So. What your, one, uh, how you would clarify your condition is that there would be a responsibility for some level of traffic control. Associated with this operation from the daily opening until eight thirty AM. And then, and then in the afternoon around school?
School lets out at two thirty, it's usually not too bad right there, but I'm gonna say about four, six.
From four o'clock until closing, they need, all right, so your, your traffic control obligation would be from the opening. Seven AM opening until eight thirty AM and then again from four PM until closing.
I just want to comment, I mean, does that property run along forty-nine? I mean, is there any way they could get any kinda, anything from M dot that they could come out down further?
It's not far enough. It would be a mess, a disaster if they tried to come down any further. I mean.
I'm talking about further north of forty-nine.
They have to be U-turning in forty-nine.
Right, they'd be turning straight in forty-nine with no red light and it would make it.
I got you.
It'd be a lot worse than.
Supernatural.
Right.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out a way to clear up that red light area.
Unfortunately, I mean, I've looked at it, cause we made them, we moved it from one spot to the next entrance, you know, trying to help and like I say, it's just. You know, really, it's about the best we can do, you know, on it. Yeah.
So we need to vote?
Uh well, first, Jay, if I may, let me ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Pierce Construction Conditional Use Permit for mining operations? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Okay, now, I don't see any, anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. You've heard the conditions. Uh what I would suggest is that you entertain a motion that would include all of the conditions as discussed.
I make a motion.
Second.
I made a motion. Jay seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That public hearing is closed. Uh item G is authorization of the board president to execute an MOU between Rankin County and the city of Flowood. This is an engineering evaluation to determine the source of stormwater encroachment. That is coming from private property located within the city of Flowood. Onto private property located in Mill Creek Four and unincorporated Rankin County. To determine whether there are potential solutions that can be brought to bear. The engineering study will be conducted by engineering service. At a cost not to exceed eight thousand, five hundred dollars with no further obligation on the part of either party to act.
Motion.
Second.
Scott made a motion. Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is authorization of the board president to execute an MOU between uh Rankin County and the city of Flowood. This is for the Hugh Ward Boulevard Manship Drive Road Segment. Uh the MOU provides that the city of Flowood is responsible for all costs associated with road, with this road project. Rankin County's involvement is limited to granting permission. For a portion of the road segment to be installed on that portion of Hugh Ward Boulevard that extends beyond the boundaries of the city of Flowood into uh unincorporated Rankin County.
Motion approved.
Second.
Jay made a motion. Scott seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
This next item is very similar. Another MOU between Rankin County and the city of Flowood. This is for engineering, design and construction of a roundabout, a portion of which is located in unincorporated Rankin County. The agreement does not commit the county to provide any funding for the project. Uh the purpose of the MOU is to establish that the county authorized the city funded road project to take place. On a portion of the public road in unincorporated Rankin County.
Motion.
I second. Scott made a motion. I seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, the next item should look and sound familiar to you. This is something that we routinely do. It's a way of record keeping and cleaning up records. This is authority for the tax collector to correct records reflecting abhorrent tax obligations. Allegedly owed by owners and occupiers of mobile homes or manufactured homes. Where it has been confirmed that the abhorrent tax assessment to the owner is erroneous. Um we always attach a list by PPIN that demonstrates the properties that are being affected by this action. Uh and it is a way for us to acknowledge that from time to time. Given units, manufactured housing units will disappear off of property. But for whatever reason, they are, continue to be carried on the books as an item subject to abhorrent tax, even though they're not there. And so this allows us to clean up the records to reflect that there is no assessable manufactured housing unit on the property. It's come to our attention and we want to correct the records to reflect that.
I make a motion to approve.
I second. Steve made a motion. Jay seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, you have what's called an indigent cremation, uh, uh, indigent cremation of human remains policy. Uh that policy allows that in the case that the coroner certifies that he is holding an unclaimed body. That uh it is imperative that the county, because the body is unclaimed, use our indigent cremation, cremation policy. To authorize a local funeral home to conduct the cremation at a stated price. You have a limitation in your policy as to what can be paid for that. I think it's four hundred and fifty dollars. Uh that's my recollection. Uh and so you would be authorizing the coroner to work directly with Chancellor Funeral Home to handle the remains that you see listed here on the agenda item. I need a motion to approve that.
Make a motion approved. Second.
Brad made a motion. Scott seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh the next item uh is a discussion of and potential action to adopt a resolution setting formal requirements for qualification for abhorrent tax exemptions. With minor revisions to the policy as originally established by the supervisors on July the sixth of twenty twenty. In your packet, gentlemen, under my section, which would be XI, and I believe it's gonna be item twelve. You should see uh the, the current policy that is there. Let's look at that. At least I hope, I, I hope you do. Do you see it there? Did it not get its way into the packet? Wonderful. Outstanding. Gentlemen, I would like to propose that we move that item to our next meeting where we will have the information in front of you to talk about. I, I have one other item in additional business. We would let the, uh, the minutes reflect that we did not discuss and we did not act on item L. And so we'll be able to, to look at that particular item at a later. Yeah, I can, I can go ahead and address uh my additional business item with you, if I may? If that's acceptable?
Thank you for that, Mal.
It's listed under additional business, so we don't have to add anything, Jay. It is discussion of a request for a waiver of the prepaid fee that is part of your public record policy. Uh you, you're trying to remember Jay. Uh Jay was here when we actually adopted a public record request policy. But he's the only one uh who was here. This goes all the way back. The last iteration of our public record request policy was updated in March of twenty fifteen. So that predates the, the other four of you guys on the board. Without even your being aware of it, we operate under a formal policy for handling public record requests. Uh and so what I want to discuss with you is that from time to time, we will get requests for a waiver. Of a part of your policy, which requires anyone requesting public records to prepay. For the cost to respond to the public record request. You may or may not be aware, but we get a lot of public record requests. They come from the media, they come from constituents, they come from vendors. Who are looking for information. So that they can approach the county maybe and conduct business with the county. Any number of people, anybody uh under state law can request information that is not otherwise publicly available. And trigger for us, unless it's an exempt record, trigger for us a responsibility to respond to that. That takes manpower, physical copies, postage. Sometimes the documents that are requested have to be reviewed. Sometimes the documents that are requested have to be reviewed by me or others before we respond. And there's a cost associated with that that is incurred by the county. Your policy requires the requister to prepay those costs before there is a response. And oftentimes, we will get from individuals or companies that make these requests, we'll get requests to waive the fee. Don't charge me for that. Just send me the records. And so we, we try to be careful not to do that. We try to not cause the citizens, the taxpayers and citizens of Rankin County to incur costs when there's a private party requesting information. Uh, and so we're not going to, without your permission, we're not going to do that. This particular request comes from an outfit that I, quite honestly, I'm not a hundred percent sure what I'm dealing with here, but my suspicion is that I'm dealing with a private vendor that, uh, that gathers information from political subdivisions like Rankin County and other counties and cities all across the state of Mississippi. And they compile that information and then they sell that information uh, to individuals and companies that could benefit from that information. They are a clearinghouse of information, but they charge for that.
So why don't we do a waiver?
We wouldn't, would we? I'm pointing this out on, in a public forum in front of you guys to make sure that you understand that from time to time, we get requests for these waivers. And I want you to be aware of why, for the most part, we respond by saying we're not going to grant a waiver for you to be able to then take that information and turn around and sell it for your own benefit. So I wanted to look you in the eye and suggest to you that we are on solid ground and that we have, uh, the backing of this board to respond to these requests when it's clear to us on the front end that these requests are coming from entities that are going to make money off of the public record that is provided, that they have to pay the prepaid cost to get the information. Y'all okay with that?
Yep.
All right, that's how we will respond. I promised a response. And so I, I'm intending to give a response. Uh, the other item of additional business, uh, for my section, gentlemen, is, uh, circling back, Jay, on our situation on Old Fannin with our gravel that routinely intrudes into the public right of way of Old Fannin Road from a particular commercial location. Uh, and I, so I wanted to give an opportunity for both you and Scott to address that. We have heard from the commercial operation that, uh, that I, I think is probably, for the most part, primarily responsible for most of the gravel that intrudes. We've heard from that individual that runs that business, that owns that business. And, uh, he indicated that even as of today, May fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, uh, he is under contract with a local asphalt paving company to install asphalt for some portion of that drive that extends from the public right of way of Old Fannin into the property that he controls and owns, some measurable distance. Asphalt, literally asphalt on top of the gravel, which should, if not solve the problem, substantially reduce the problem that we see there. I wanted to mention that because we had convened a review hearing for today, May fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, and had invited the property owner, the business owner, to come and to address the board. And before we got here today, we learned that there is an, an agreement in place to get that drive asphalted. So I wanted the board to hear that. It's why we're not going to have a review hearing. We're going to give them an opportunity to, to get that handled.
Scott's such a good supervisor, he can make one phone call and got it done.
Yep.
I used your name.
Yep. So anyway, we wanted to address the board about that and, uh, it appears that, my hope is that even after today, possibly, we no longer have an issue there.
He was very positive, he thought it was gonna happen.
Oh, okay. Gentlemen, I, I have, uh, i- if we could revisit the one that I skipped, which is your tax exemption policy?
So I thought we were not going to have a policy until we got our new guy in place, so we can discuss this with him.
Yes, I, I, my, my recollection, Jay, is that, um, that we have had a number of requests that have come up recently. Uh, and we are operating under an existing policy arrangement. And so I wanted to address with the board, uh, is, is the current policy, what you're looking at, by the way, is in fact the current policy. This is, this is simply to document what your current policy is, to make sure that all of the variations that we've had through the years get incorporated into one document so that we can specifically be able to message and follow this.
Can I say something? Uh, I think we need to look at this and I need to study this before we take any action on this.
Yeah.
But I just, I just received it and, uh, we might can save a little time and, uh, I don't know how y'all feel about it, but.
I agree.
Right, I need to, uh, go over it because if it was something happening in two thousand and twenty or, you know, to, to review it a little bit, you know, if you don't have an issue with that.
No, sir, not at all. I would circle item two. Circle item two, because that's, that's the one area where this board made substantial changes in recent days. And item two has to do with what are the items of abhorrent tax that will not be exempted? Will not be exempted. Okay? When we, when we tell them that you're entitled to a tax exemption, their default setting is, well, it's everything that is assessed. And item two says, oh, no, there are certain things that it doesn't matter who you are, you're going to pay those particular millage items. So I want you to pay attention to, to, to what exactly is included in that. Okay? I'll notice, uh, public roads. So your road and bridge, your bridge and culvert. Everybody pays that. Businesses, individuals. It's even, uh, a, a portion of personal property tax recovery. Debt retirement, which would include Heinz Community College, the bond obligation that we have there, any general obligation bonds, and Heinz Community College maintenance, enlargement and improvement, are any of our vote tax supports. We expect any businesses that locate here, Sid, to be obligated to pay, help us to pay debt service and Heinz Community College millages in addition to road and bridge and bridge and culvert. So those items, they, those items right there have never been a part of your formal policy as published and made available. So what we're trying to do is to make sure that item two is clear to anybody and everybody. The rest of this is existing policy not to be changed, unless the board wants to make some other change that I'm not aware of. So all we were trying to do today was to clarify the, the millages that would be excluded from a tax exemption. So what if we, uh, allow you guys to marinate on it, think about it, and then we'll come back, uh, at our, probably at our May fifteen meeting and, uh, have it on the agenda item for action on that day, if that's acceptable?
That's what I, yeah.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you all.
Mr. Hicks, you would step up to the podium, sir?
I was trying to make it quick for Jay.
Huh?
I was trying to make it quick for Jay.
Give us your name and address.
Rankin County. Uh, item A is acknowledgement of receipt of, uh, one thousand and seventy-three Homestead, uh, applications and two hundred and sixty-nine amended Homestead applications. And they were submitted by the Tax Assessor's Office to the Chancery Clerk's Office for March.
Motion approved.
Brad made a motion. Steve seconded that motion. He got it for you, did he?
Okay. He was just.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
I was reading something right there.
Next item is authority for the board president to execute our continuing disclosure engagement letter uh, for our bond council and to prepare the required financial disclosures associated with Rankin County's outstanding GO bonds and other bonded indebtedness. And authority for the board president, myself and other personnel to execute all documents associated on behalf of Rankin County.
I make a motion?
Second.
So just where we select, do we?
This, no, this is just our annual disclosure statement on our existing debt.
I made a motion. Steve seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries.
Thanks, sir.
Good job, Keith.
I believe we covered additional business already, haven't we?
Yes, sir.
Uh, no.
I make the motion, we can come to recess. I make, what recess do all the fifteenth and May?
Jay made a motion to recess to May the fifteenth. Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries, we recess to May fifteenth.
We'll see you ladies on the fifteenth.